Okay, it is eight thirty. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is the commissioner on?
Yes, Norman just joined.
Okay. Okay, then let me call the planning board meeting Tuesday, April sixth order. As you can see on the screen, the next meeting dates are May fourth, June first, and July sixth. Next adoption of the minutes, the meeting of March second. Does anyone have any edits or changes they would like to make? If not, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes of March second?
This is Rob, so move.
Thank you, Rob. Can we have a second?
Kathy's second.
Thank you, Kathy. Call the roll, please.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Barron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas? Not yet. Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Hamena Franchella? Let's see, not yet. Okay, Hugh Grecian or Gail?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Um, Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Vincent Kopicki? Or is Nat here? I don't see Nat. Okay, Kathy O'Connor?
Kathy O'Connor, did you say?
Yes, Kathy, thank you.
I'm under an alias, yes.
And Bernie Toms? And no, Reenie Toback?
Yes.
Great, thank you all.
Okay, next chairman's remarks. To the best of my knowledge, Con Edison has still not responded to our letter requesting information regarding both the cut, cutting down of trees off of the Spraybrook Parkway under the power lines and county land and the trimming of trees on local municipal streets. This is just outrageous and we'll see if they have to come in for additional approval from the county in the future. As you can see at the bottom in your package for board information, there was a municipal payment in lieu of ordinances of the various municipalities in the county. They're very different. Some of them don't even have dollar amounts and maybe if we have enough time at the end of the meeting, we can discuss it or we can put it on the agenda next time. Member Dan Finger had requested that and the staff put that list together. And lastly, for me, I would like at some point a good update on the status of construction at Memorial Field in Malvernham. It's one of the biggest projects going now in the county as far as recreation, I guess, and it's dear to my heart having been commissioner in Malvernham and used to play tennis down there all the time. So at some point, if we get a status of the construction at Memorial Field. Commissioner Drummond?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. So Kathy O'Connor or Gail, maybe perhaps at next month's meeting, we can get a quick update on Memorial Field, okay? On for my remarks, I just wanted, normally by now, we would have had census 2020 data out to start redistricting, but I, because it was, because by the constitution, the data was supposed to be out for states by April first. But obviously with the delay from the pandemic last year, the, and the delay in ending the census, the Census Bureau has now pushed that out that they say they are going to have all the data out for redistricting purposes out by September thirtieth. So some organizations have started talking about redistricting. Certainly, we've had a conversation with some of the members of the Board of Legislature about, you know, the delay in the data, but understanding census geography and things like that. The League of Women Voters is doing a forum on this Thursday evening about as well. So, you know, things are starting to, you know, people are starting to have the discussions about it, but again, at this point, without data, there's not a whole lot that can get done just yet. There are also a number of housing forums. This is, spring tends to be a lot of time when, a lot of the time that we see many of the training opportunities. So there, if, you know, again, board members have an obligation to get four hours in each year. So to the extent that you can get your training done in the spring would be great. And then the last thing I was just going to mention was with the, with President Biden's infrastructure plan that got released. It's going to be interesting to see how that really all shakes out in terms of our ability to be able to get some infrastructure projects done here in the county. Lately, we've had a couple of water issues here, particularly affecting some of our school districts. So it's going to be really important that, you know, we really get our redist, or sorry, our infrastructure ideas and projects really as ready to go as we can so that we can make the most of any of the money that's going to become available in New York and in Westchester in specific. Thanks, Richard.
Okay, well, one of the issues regarding redistricting is since it's coming so late, there are a lot of elected officials that don't even know if they live in the district that they're going to be, that are going to be redrawn. They may not even be able to run for reelection because they don't live in the new district. So it's going to be a little strange by the end of the year. Okay, next referrals, ratification of actions taken by staff in response to planning and zoning actions referred to the county planning board February sixteenth through March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Does anyone have any comments on any of those referrals? Okay, again, it seems like the number of referrals seems to be going down a little bit. I don't know if it's COVID or winter or whatever, but okay, can I, can I have a motion to approve the ratification of these actions?
So much.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
This is Holly, all second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Barron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas? I think I saw Dwight there. All right, I'll go to Hamena Franchella?
Yes.
Gail Katzman for Hugh Grecian?
Yes.
Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Vincent Kopicki? Or Nat Federici for Vincent Kopicki?
Yes.
Thank you.
Daniel fingered a yes. I don't know if he got that.
Thank you, Daniel. Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Bernie Toms? I don't see Bernie yet. And Reenie Toback?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation for the Town of Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan referral. Who's doing that presentation?
Uh, yes, that is me, Michael Vernon.
Okay, Michael.
Michael Lipkin, if I could get the share content, the button's not highlighted for me. There we go. Okay, so this is, this is a referral for an update of the Mount Pleasant Comprehensive Plan as well as a new form-based zoning code for three of the town's hamlets, the main ones of Valhalla, Hawthorne, and Thornwood. The zoning codes changes stem from the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, so I'm going to begin with an overview of the plan. Sorry, this map here shows a layout of the town and its hamlets, including the three that I mentioned, Valhalla down here. Can everyone see my pointer? I'll turn it into a laser there. Okay, Valhalla down here, Hawthorne and Thornwood towards the middle. There are many reasons for an update for the comprehensive plan. The existing plan was approved in nineteen seventy and the town has recognized that over the fifty years of development, that has led to some hip-housid growth. Most of the developable land is zoned for single-family housing, leaving little room for denser developments under the existing code. Over half of the town is actually set aside as open space in various degrees, providing much of the character of the town, but leading to problems of access and conservation. New development practices, such as the decline of the office parks along Columbus Avenue, the developments of the North Sixty, the decline of traditional retail, and the housing crisis to further stress the need for a comprehensive plan. And the town also would like to revitalize the three major hamlets by focusing new denser developments within them and refining a sense of place unique to each other, new to the center. That's kind of a major trend of the whole plan is defining a sense of place for the hamlets. The implementation process for the new plan began in twenty eighteen and included various public workshops to gather input from residents and stakeholders as well as the creation of steering committee to take concerns and recommendations to create the plan. It's divided into seven broad topics, each containing specific goals, and then discusses strategies to achieve those goals. The update to the zoning code was one of the implementation strategies and was actually co-developed with the plan. Seven central topics relate to the natural, economic, social, and built environments, mobility and connectivity, the hamlets, and then sustainability and resiliency. Regarding the natural environment, the main goals are to preserve and connect to the various open spaces around the town, specifically the many parklands. This map shows all of the open spaces within Mount Pleasant. This dark purple over here is city waterlands. This brownish color here is cemeteries. This is the North Sixty and the rest of the Hala campus. And the salmon color here is actually the major parks. The town also has some flooding issues, specifically Brady Avenue and Hawthorne, the Four Corners in Thornwood, and Park and Stevens Avenue in Valhalla, just to name a few of them. Invasive plant and animal species are a problem all over the county, but the town recognized the importance of curbing their spread within the large open areas throughout Mount Pleasant to protect the natural environment. And then they have some smart growth and pollution reduction policies, which are discussed mainly in the latter chapters, but they developed an ongoing theme in this one to talk about smart growth especially. Regarding implementation strategies, the goals begin with creating an inventory of the town's open spaces, ranking them by importance, use, accessibility, and other qualifiers, which Lucas actually started doing a countywide one, so that they're kind of going a little more in-depth with what their study. We do note that most of the town parks are actually restricted to town residents, which we may want to discuss in our letter, opening those up to more people. The town would also, through the plan, create a Mount Pleasant Conservation Legacy Program to oversee the protection of open space and develop a conservation toolbox to assist developers with various policies. They want to implement a habitat corridor protection plan required for large-scale developments in order to protect wildlife migration patterns between open spaces. And then some other strategies deal with common problems faced by the county, like stormwater management, to deal with runoff. They want to insert a policy to require developments to maintain pre-development levels of water runoff, especially on the larger scale developments. They also want to put in a local flood hazard mitigation plan to supplement the county's flood hazard plan. They recognize that water quality and conservation ties into stormwater management, so various design, policy, and education initiatives are discussed along with wetland protection and remediation and pollution mitigation proposals. Regarding the economic environment, this chapter really doesn't go into too many specific recommendations. It's kind of, a lot of the runs that they talk about are redundant to the other chapters. One of the bigger things that they discuss is the fact that housing right now is kind of focused on single family. They discuss providing adequate housing for residents focusing on seniors and young adults. They recognize that the business landscape has changed and seek to attract new types of small businesses and guide them to revitalize the three business hamlets. The town also recognizes that the office parks within the town needs to be rejuvenated and note that new use types should be allowed within the office park zones. Finally, the town acknowledges the importance of the medical and biotech workforce within Mount Pleasant and seeks to better serve their needs. They also state the importance of integrating the North Sixty into the town instead of allowing it to be sectioned off and unconnected. So they talk about that a little bit later in the plan. The social environment's another smaller chapter. It mainly details the history of the town as well as explains the different governmental services that are provided. Implementation strategies are again light in this chapter. But the plan does seek to establish a historic advisory council to support the historical society and help analyze projects under land use review. The town actually stated that they want to protect more areas under the national and state listings and also desire to provide a more historical education through the schools, public outreach, and especially signage around to guide people to these historical locations. More provisions for senior services are desired, again, through providing more senior housing, but also through the application of technology. The plan calls to periodically review the existing assisted living zone that was recently passed to make sure that it's still working for seniors. A major component of this is that the plan seeks to keep school enrollment down through focusing residential developments on senior and one-bedroom housing and requiring any proposed large-scale single-family developments to undergo school impact assessments. Finally, the plan seeks to revamp municipal services by providing more information and easier means for residents to access those services, both online and through in-person means. They want to actually install a mobile town hall vehicle so people can take forms if they can't get too far from their house. Now, the kind of the larger chapter is devoted to the built environment. This map shows the land uses of the town. You see these big blue zones are the institutional zones. The green are parks. Again, these are the cemeteries. And then this is the Valhalla campus, or also known as grasslands. Most of the developed land area in the town is covered with single-family housing, which is all of the yellow on this map. The town wishes to keep those zones kind of intact, but they do recognize that the housing stock is aging and the town knows that older homes may be phased out and replaced with newer, so they want to keep those regulations so that the scale of those newer houses stays the same. Saying that, increased density, they want to focus on the hamlets. Where infrastructure and transportation are able to handle the increase in population and also use additional housing in the hamlets to revitalize the commercial uses in those areas. State that new developments should be integrated in both design and function with the neighboring areas and their large-scale projects, again, like the North Sixty. Here should be taken to ensure they are not separated from the rest of the town connectivity-wise. The town is concerned that should any of the large institutional uses, again, in blue on this map, if any of those institutional uses should close, they want to make sure that the land is properly reused. And the plan also takes a look at new infrastructure patterns and, as said before, desires to maintain and increase open space. Some of the recommendations in this part of the plan include, this is where they stated they want to update the zoning code. Not just the form-based code that, which is kind of the first thing that they implemented in the whole plan, coinciding with the plan. But again, keep single-family areas maintained. The plan calls to expand the allowable uses in the office business zone where office parks are located, both to the west of the Grasslands Campus and also along Columbus Avenue. They want to allow retail, restaurants, theaters, self-storage, and multifamily and other mixed uses under special permit within those office park zones. A new institutional overlay zone is recommended, which would allow the continuing operation of the existing use, should it be paused or closed, because right now, a lot of those institutional uses are actually zoned, single-family. So they want to, if, if one of those leases closed, they want to have a little bit more control over what happens there in the future so that it doesn't just turn into a new single-family development, try to turn it into maybe another institutional use, but most of that guidance would be provided by the town boards. The plan states that the town should work with multifamily developers to set aside affordable units within their buildings. And they do mention the county ordinance as a framework, but it does not specifically call for its adoption. So that's something in our letter, we should mention that they should adopt the county model ordinance. There's many updates that they talk about to the rest of the zoning code, to realign the code with the current state and federal requirements, and also to various modern planning theories. It does specifically call to incorporate green building requirements into the ordinance. Regarding the North Sixty, the plan states that transportation conflicts should be minimized and it discusses actually a special permit requiring, or a special permit that would forbid chain restaurants within the North Sixty and also make them focus on bringing local businesses into the North Sixty. Regarding regarding infrastructure implementation strategies, they, two of the big things, they want to reconfigure the water districts. This teal color down here is the Pocantico District, and this is the Kensico Water District in yellow here. They want to kind of combine those two districts. They want to do a study to see if they can combine those two districts. And they also want to perhaps create a new district up in Pleasantville because there's areas there that have water pressure issues. So there's a kind of the two main things they talk about regarding specific infrastructure plans. And they do also call for the adoption of infill and infiltration mitigation measures, and they discuss the county's recommendation for three to one ratio in that. Another major component of this section of the plan, they actually want to put together a new trailway connecting the North County Trailway. North County Trailway is this red line that runs here, connect that and Graham Hills Park up through Pleasantville following this blue line and calling it the Mount Pleasant Recreational Trailway, which will then lead people to the Bronx River Parkway and the Kensico Dam Plaza. The plan actually desired to travel through city DEP lands over here next to the reservoir. But within the package that we received, the city actually said that that was not possible. So they also discussed rooting it along Columbus Avenue up here. The plan does not actually indicate if this would be a shared bike and pedestrian pathway specifically. They talk a lot about bikes in the plan, but they didn't specifically say that. So in the letter, we're going to recommend that allowances for bicycles be included, since it connects North County Trailway to the Bronx River Trailway. And another thing we have to let them know, the Terrytown-Kensico Trail, as planned right now, doesn't just follow Grasslands Road, it actually hooks up and swings through the Grasslands Campus. So we need to discuss that with them and have them know that to keep up with what we're planning for the Terrytown-Kensico Trail. That ties into mobility and connectivity. The town recognizes that it's difficult to travel east and west across Mount Pleasant, especially if you don't have a car. This map shows the, most of the state and county roads are actually north and south, or don't really travel east and west to connect some of the major hamlets. In conjunction with revitalizing the hamlets, the plan calls to implement more complete streets practices in order to promote their location to transit, as well as, again, creating that sense of place for the hamlets. They do discuss parking issues as a problem faced within the hamlets, and coupled with that is the acknowledgement that first and last mile accessibility issues cause problems for both traffic and parking in the town. Some implementation strategies for transportation, they want to conduct studies on various intersections around the town, including the Four Corners and Lakewood and Bradhurst Avenue, Elwood and Comerance Streets, and some of the entrances to the parkways like at Cleveland Avenue in Valhalla. They talk a lot about roundabouts. They seem to really like those. They're discussed a lot in the plan. The plan recommends adopting complete streets policies advocated by Smart Growth America and also clear guidelines that provide standards for design. This would include actually a new complete streets checklist within application packages that developers would have to fill out along with their safe plans applications. They talk about avoiding cul-de-sacs, as well as the inclusion of interparcial bicycle and pedestrian connections within any new larger developments. The plan states that multimodal connections should be a focus of the town and bicycle storage facilities at both residential and workplaces should be required. A Safe Roots to Schools program is also mentioned, and that EIS scoping documents should be required to include bicycle and pedestrian accessibility impacts. Plan, again, regarding parking issues, they realize that parking issues are both actual and perceived. So it calls for gathering parking within the hamlets, especially into shared lots with wayfinding to guide drivers to that parking, utilizing combined backlots to allow for public parking and that off-street parking should be permitted within commercial parking requirements, including the use of shared lots. Mass transit is encouraged in the plan through the centralization of development within the hamlets and the promotion of walking and bicycling. Bike and vehicle sharing is mentioned as a way to bridge that first and last mile gap, and the plan calls to assist in the creation of transportation management plans among the town's major institutions and employers. Though there is some discussion about working with the Beeline system to update and refine bus stops, but there's no real firm conceptions of how to do so or how to work with the Beeline. They give very little discussion in the plan regarding the buses. They do actually, though, mention some new technologies. They talk about electric bikes, scooters, and then autonomous vehicles and some kind of really interesting futuristic technologies like drone delivery systems and wireless power traffic lanes, but that's way into the future, and they kind of just mention it as things that might be happening in the future. For sustainability and resiliency, ideals are discussed within the plan with goals focusing on climate change management, lowering energy and water usage, reducing waste, promoting green building technologies, and preparing the public for emergencies. Some of the implementation strategies regarding energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions, the plan's calls to support the county's climate action plan to reduce emissions by eighty percent by twenty fifty. Town vehicles will be converted into electric as they age out, and they would also like to pass an anti-idling law. The NYSERTA Model Solar Energy Law would also be considered for adoption, and they want to take on some public education initiatives, encouraging residents to reduce the carbon footprints and also recommends green building choices and practices. The plan calls to require all new construction over ten thousand square feet of gross floor area to meet LEED certification standards and also calls to develop a Green Mount Pleasant certification program that would incentivize building permit applications to comply with green policies for reduced fees, IDA benefits, or tax incentives. Some other initiatives that the plan mentions includes creating a reuse swap shop actually for repurposed goods. This is something that I found interesting. So that people can take items that they don't want and kind of have a combined location for people to swap items. They also want to require public notice of demolitions to solicit construction salvage and to establish community gardens within each hamlet. Regarding disaster preparedness, it is discussed with a call to prepare the public for future weather, technological, terrorist, or public health hazards. The recommendations of the County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan would be followed according to their comprehensive plan. I did skip over the hamlet chapter at first, since it flows into the discussion of the form-based code, so we're almost done. The plan focuses a great deal on the need of the central hamlets, again, of Valhalla, Hawthorne, and Thornwood, to become places people want to be rather than just focusing on them as neighborhood shopping centers. The town recognizes that to do so, residential density must be increased in the hamlets to ensure people are constantly there. The plan notes that place-making is an important means of revitalization, so it involves discussion on making the hamlets unique, interesting, safe, and vibrant. The plan also notes that many of the traditional downtown uses like retail and office space are changing or being replaced, and that use adaptation is a key to successful centers. Also, as stated before, they want to integrate smart growth policies and reimagine parking areas as a focus. The first step of the whole thing was to go over the, to instigate the form-based code for the hamlets. The plan also states to target underutilized sites for infill developments, and they did actually mention incentives and also eminent domain, which brings in some issues with that that we might want to discuss in the letter, but smart growth principles are again mentioned here, as well as including design guidelines for the hamlets. These initiatives would be structured for both public and private developments. The plan includes a goal of creating public activity space for each hamlet, which could be used for functions like farmers' markets or concerts or festivals. And then finally, they want to start a creation of a gateway plan for the town to focus on place-making and public art. So they've had some examples of what gateways could look like for the three hamlets. Focusing on Valhalla, this hamlet is centered on Broadway, which turns into Columbus Avenue in the middle. And then also the Teconic Parkway, coupled with Broadway, separates the hamlet area from the train station. The plan mentions a few key ideas along with the new form-based code, recognizing that there's a lot of land over here with the Holy Name of Jesus Church that's underutilized. This land separates the hamlets from Kensico Dam Plaza. The plan notes that this would actually be a good location for senior housing along this corner here. Up here towards the north, that's actually all hillside that slopes into the dam itself. But they were discussing, maybe talking with the church to do some senior housing closer to Broadway. This is one of the various vision concepts that they had. These aren't necessarily things that they're going to do. They're just kind of ideas of what the town could look like. It notes that many of the properties could actually consolidate their building footprints, which would leave room to establish pedestrian plazas here along the corners. And then also those rear yard parking areas that they talk about a lot. Building redevelopment should accommodate mixed-use structures to allow for denser development near the train station. So these buildings could actually be four stories tall under the new form-based code. They don't actually mention it in the plan, but I personally believe that a pedestrian bridge should be constructed over the Teconic to make it easier for people to reach the train station. It would benefit both the hamlets and also the Kensico Dam Plaza to make it more accessible by train. And then some gateway signage could be provided along the pedestrian bridge for the towns since they discuss a lot about gateways and place making. We would also stress that connectivity to the plaza from the train station is important and should be assisted by more sidewalks, better lighting, and signage. We move on now to hamlet or to Hawthorne hamlet. It's a little bit larger and is centered on Elwood Avenue, which rolls up here and turns into Comerance Streets. It also includes a commercial triangle along Broadway and Brighton Avenue. The Hawthorne train station lies in the middle of the hamlets and isn't separated by a large highway. And then they also discuss a subarea behind the train station, which is along Broadway. This is the state is a core density area. Currently, this core density area contains industrial uses while the rest of the hamlets is mainly smaller commercial buildings with many open parking lots and underutilized properties. For a vision plan for Hawthorne, I'm just as a note, north is now along the right side of the screen. This is one of the places where they want to install a roundabout at Comerance and Elwood. As it means to calm traffic and place make, they also want to reconfigure the plaza in front of the train station to allow it to be more pedestrian friendly. The core density area would actually correspond with these buildings here. It would permit an increased density of one story in exchange for public amenities laid out in the form-based code. Another idea is they want to put a parking garage back here, which is this is Broadway Field to the north and then the cemetery to the south with the reformed church for Hawthorne. And like in Valhalla, they say that building footprints can be consolidated to create space for public and rear yard parking lots. Now onto Thornwood. It's the largest of the three main hamlets in the town and follows Comerance Street, the border of the Hawthorne hamlets actually right down here. So it follows Comerance Street all the way up to the four corners, which is the intersections of Franklin Avenue, Broadway, Marble Avenue, and Kensico Road. There's the town center shopping plaza, which lies north of the four corners, and then Marble Avenue continues up to Pleasantville with some smaller commercial buildings. The train actually does run through the hamlets, but it no longer stops it because the Thornwood Station was demolished in the 1980s. The plan states that because of the lack of train station, it reduces transit-oriented development opportunities. But it doesn't, the plan unfortunately doesn't really go in again into how buses or microtransit could assist commuters to the Pleasantville or the Hawthorne train stations, for instance. Because of what they think is a lack of transit opportunities, that doesn't go into many initiatives for Thornwood other than establishing the form-based code zone here. But again, it does call for the four corners to be replaced with a roundabout. Okay, so now regarding the form-based code itself. Excuse me, the code calls for all of the zoning within the boundaries that I just went through for Hawthorne, Valhalla, and Thornwood to be established to to replace all of the current existing zoning and replace it with new districts corresponding to each hamlet. So you have the VH for Valhalla, HH and TH as noted here. That core density area within Hawthorne is also demarked with its own zone sometimes. So there are some issues where they need to standardize in the zoning code, the HHC zone. The code specifies seven permitted building types for the districts with only townhouses and detached dwellings prohibited in the in the form or in the code within the that core density zone in Hawthorne. More detailed information regarding these regulations is explained later. This is kind of just an overview of what would be allowed. The code then overviews definitions and regulations applicable to all buildings in each of the three zones, including sites, lots, outdoor amenity space standards, setback explanations, and specific ways to measure building heights depending on first floor and also total height. Building type regulations, this is kind of a standard thing amongst many form-based codes. They have kind of a picture to describe what they're talking about, and then they list all the numerical data. It's the tallest heights would be allowed would be four stories with again, a fifth permitted in the Hawthorne core density zone. If the applicant provides civic amenities such as public open space or additional public open space than what's required. Historic preservation, brown filter remediation, infrastructure improvements beyond what's needed, public artwork, or contribution to public parking facilities. The permitted use says between all three zones are common. And actually, I was kind of even wondering why they bothered to make three distinct zones as opposed to just having one hamlet type zone and then the core density zone, but that's kind of just how they did it. The exception to that is the Hawthorne core density zone, which would again prohibit single family and two families uses and also for some reason biotech research and development. Again, that's just within that core density zone in Hawthorne. And some other uses would require special permits just for that zone. This chart also includes a THC zone, which
Michael, where are you? Hello?
Michael, we lost your audio.
How should we proceed here?
Well, the good news is he was almost done. But we have to get him to unshare his screen to be able to, well, you know what? Why don't we start discussion about what you guys have seen so far? And then, because we got to write a letter obviously to them. So obviously, Michael's hit on a couple of things like the lack of affordable housing, actually adopting the model ordinance and things of that sort. So he, you know, will include that. But what else would you like to comment on? And and we two of our board members are residents in Mount Pleasant. So that's why we did, you know, spend probably more time on this. The fact that their plan was 50 years old and, you know, we have a couple of residents. We thought it was important to do this.
Okay. Kathy, you want to start?
Yes, I just a couple of things. I'm glad they're mentioning parks and recreation. An interesting scenario about the trailway connecting to the North County Trail, connecting to BRP through Graham Hills. I mean, that that's, that's quite a, quite a scenario. Lots of discussion on bicycle as opposed to cars. So that's a good thing. But it's very specific, and I don't know if Michael can answer even answer this. On Columbus Avenue, right up from the metropolis of Valhalla, a family got a zoning to build four eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar homes built right into the hills. If you all, if any of you are familiar, going up Columbus Avenue from downtown, there's a stone wall. That's also a discussion because I think the county built it. But anyway, above that is where they're looking to build the houses and the equipment is there. It probably is a done deal, but I just, I'm flabbergasted that any zoning or, you know, any organization would agree to build homes on a precipice, which is really what it is. So just a couple of comments in that respect. And there's a tremendous amount of office space and, you know, Pepsi just built a huge building opposite the town hall and right across the street is a beautiful building that I think is predominantly empty. So just interesting stuff. Not any real questions other than what were they thinking on the zoning of those four homes? It's crazy.
Thank you, Kathy. Is Bernie Toms on?
Yes.
Bernie?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. One of the big issues is traffic coming in and out of even the the town itself. Because it's the only major roadway that we get in and out, we have a lot of severe traffic there. And it doesn't appear as though they're looking to open up the roadway unless I came in late and did not get the explanation behind it, but more homes with the same traffic pattern, it's it's just going to be devastating in the area. It it's quite a problem now in the morning when you have the school buses coming and going along with the major traffic that takes place. And we have big rigs and eighteen-wheelers coming in and through the town and up through Valhalla itself, all the way in through Hawthorne. So it just, it's amazing that this hasn't been approached in some way or discussed in some way.
Bernie, is there a specific road you're talking about? It like, it sounds like you're talking about Broadway that becomes Columbus. So.
I'm actually talking, yeah, about Broadway that becomes Columbus.
Yes, and a big part of that is the dam road. You know, the on top of the dam has been closed obviously for since nine eleven and there's been many, many studies on it. I've gone to meetings trying to promote opening it. Unfortunately, we don't own, the county does not own that road. It's New York City. So the previous administration was never going to get any leg up on that scenario. But it it, the number is six thousand cars, at least that was a few years ago, six thousand cars a day are displaced from going over the dam. They go in front of the dam. So, you know, that's why we finally got that light in front of the dam, which thank God, I think is very helpful. But Bernie, you're right. I mean, you know, the the traffic, you can't make a lap. You can't get out of Valhalla in the morning and you can't get back in in the afternoon. And it really is is quite, I don't, I, you know, I don't know what they're going to do. But it really is quite an issue.
Thank you, Kathy.
And Richard, Richard, just to add on to that, I've been trying to get the state's attention to that last four, first or two and a half miles of the Teconic Parkway. Because of all of the improvements they've made to the Teconic, they've kind of like forgotten that area, you know, in front of the Valhalla train station all the way up, you know, until it actually meets where the strain and the Teconic converge there. So, you know, it even that, I mean, because I drive through there every day, you can see all of the traffic that gets backlogged in front of the old Holy Name. The one sake that I missed, that I noticed that, you know, I commented to Michael that I noticed they missed was they talk about Holy Name, but they talk about Holy Rosary. And so the Holy Rosary Church in Hawthorne, they're right on Bradhurst, you know, is a site I've actually trying to be trying to get from the arches for a couple of years now. I've actually had conversations with a real estate person because I just think that site would be perfect for housing. Plus, the county tends to use that site. It's overflow for the transportation management center behind it whenever we have to activate the emergency operations center. So, you know, bus lines run it right in front of it. So I think they're actually have, they have a number of not just former office sites, but a couple of religious, former religious sites as well that are ripe for redevelopment.
Then Norma, let me, let me add on to the, on to that. I've seen a lot of communities that do these open space inventories with very fancy matrices on priorities and everything. But they don't do an affordable housing site inventory with matrices. The only one that's really done that is the Village Rival. And some, and there should be something similar to the open space inventory to an affordable housing site. You mentioned one or two. I'm sure there are very, there are many others. And of course, that's completely ignored. Was there a planning consultant that worked on this? Do we know?
I know Pat Cleary, what I believe was involved. I don't know if he was the primary consultant, but he was.
Yeah, Pat is their consultant. I know they were using Pace. Oh, but Michael's back. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, sorry, I was muted again. Yeah, it was Pat Cleary's Clear Consulting that was the the major consulting firm. And then, yeah, they used a pace land use for a lot of the public engagement.
Do we have a timeframe for their adoption of form-based code for the hamlets?
They did not say, again, they still have to create the GEIS and that scoping documents is, I believe in a couple of days, actually, they're going to approve the scoping documents and then actually conduct the GEIS.
Okay.
Michael, did we miss much of your presentation from when you cut out?
Oh, I didn't actually know I cut out. I'm sorry. Hopefully not. I don't know what was the last thing that was cut out.
The list of permitted uses was the last one.
Yeah, you had just gone through the fact that there were some of those uses were the same in the in the hamlets and, you know, that.
Okay, let me go back. That was, that's strange. Oh, permitted uses. Yeah, there wasn't much more. It was basically parking. They did a discussion on parking. The basic gist of the parking regulations is that they want to have a park once policy so that people can park in one location and then walk to the other locations. They have some design guidelines based off of where islands should be placed and also where sidewalks should be placed within the sidewalk, within the parking lots. And they want to put them in the rear of the properties. They want to do electric charging station requirements. Strange thing with the parking was that they didn't actually go into requirements for bicycles despite the fact that the conference of plan talks a lot about bicycles. So that's something we definitely want to mention for the farm-based code section. And then they went over some of the design guidelines. They basically have some pages with building design guidelines and then also some images of what they're looking for. And that was pretty much it. Oh, for regulation purposes, a strange thing that they're trying to do is an expedited review, which let me go back to that. The expedited review would allow developments permitted as of rights that comply with the zoning regulations without need for variances, buildings that are type two or are unlisted under SEAKER and do not exceed twelve dwelling units or 10,000 square feet of non-residential floor area. That expedited review would allow for a single appearance before the planning board without a public hearing. And those projects would require a certificate of compliance by a new zoning review committee, which would be essentially the town engineer, building inspector, and planning consultants. The town board could then later on require additional meeting dates or a public hearing. But we need to mention in our letter that that would not preclude the county's referral review for anything that would require a referral review, even if they aren't going through an official full public hearing. So that's something that we definitely need to add to our letter.
Thank you, Michael. There's one other thing on traffic. One of the purposes of the county planning board being involved is to deal with intermunicipal issues. And we had this come up when the Amazon proposal came up on nine A and the fact that that was going to be a major traffic problem for the town of Greenberg. And so I think our letters should indicate that they need to take into account the impact of what they're proposing in Mount Pleasant on the adjoining municipalities. Do any of the members have any comments or questions?
I I do.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is a very ambitious project and it was just to mention about eminent domain. And I was wondering who was affected, maybe if there were any details about that.
It was kind of something they mentioned, but yeah, that highlighted, I highlighted that because that could be used very, very poorly. I think what they were more alluding to was especially in in Hawthorne, there's a lot of kind of empty storefronts or just vacant land that they would like to kind of consolidate to use to better purposes. But they didn't really give any specifics about that. They kind of just mentioned, oh, eminent domain is an option. And I was, I just kind of noted that as it could be problematic.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Richard, just real quick. Michael, it's Kathy. Did you hear anything that I said about the the family that has houses being built on Columbus Avenue on the precipice? Do you know anything about that?
Oh, I didn't hear about that. No.
Okay, just real quick. I'm just curious. There are four plots settling at about eight, nine hundred thousand dollars just coming up from Valhalla on the right side, right above the stone wall that's there. It is literally a precipice, not to mention the fact that there's one driveway for four homes. I'm just really kind of not, I'm not asking you. I'm just, it's a comment. I find it unbelievable that zoning in Mount Pleasant in Valhalla approved that. I find it unbelievable that zoning in Mount Pleasant, in Valhalla approved that. Number one, number two, any discussion on how to get stores back into the downtown? There's really two blocks of downtown in, in Valhalla. And I think a lot of it is due to the lack of parking. So is that something that they're looking into?
Again, with the parking, they, especially for Valhalla, because I kind of know Valhalla more than the other hamlets. And yeah, that, that's, it's a big issue there. So that's, that's what they were discussing about combining lots and allowing businesses to kind of time their parking and share it. That, that was kind of the main focus for the Valhalla area was to move parking towards the rear of the properties when possible and also consolidate it, consolidating lots if possible. And that's how they kind of were discussing the parking issues. They didn't have any specific plans for any, or ideas for any garages down there. But they did say, there was something, oh, yeah, that's right. They, behind that senior housing development that they were discussing on the church's property, they were also saying, kind of behind there could be also another opportunity for, for kind of a more municipal parking.
And last comment from me, because we're so active at Kansego Dam Plaza, as you can all imagine, it, it looks like we're having an event every day in good weather and we're not. I have approached the church for the last five, seven years. I've spoken to different pastors, I've spoken to the woman that runs the show, et cetera, et cetera. And I've asked desperately for the ability to use their parking lot, obviously, when church is not happening, especially for Winter Wonderland. And I told them they could charge, we would man it, we would clean it. We do it in other facilities because we, our parking doesn't always match the number of people that are coming to the park. I have begged, borrowed and stole and basically were told no. So it's not easy to work with. And, and I go to that church, so, well, I used to. But anyway, interesting scenario, because yes, there is property there, but not easy to work with. And the last thing was is that they're not allowing the dam road on top of the dam to ever be opened, apparently. Was that discussed at all?
They didn't discuss opening the dam? No, they, they just said that when it closed was a problem for traffic, but they didn't, they didn't talk about trying to open that, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Michael, this is Holly. Along that of connectivity, east-west connectivity, did they come up with any studies on that? Because opening that road would help with, with connectivity between.
They just stated in the plan that they would like to do studies. So they, they kind of just put that in the plan that this study should happen. They didn't list any specific examples. But, but yeah, they basically are saying studies should happen, so. That's a lot of, a lot of that is kind of organizing which studies are the most important that they should do in the future. Just because, again, they haven't had a plan in fifty years, so they're trying to figure out exactly what they need to do. And that's kind of what the comprehensive plan is, is listing is initiatives that should be undertaken.
Hi, Michael, this is Rob. To Richard's point about sort of the impacts on intermunicipal stuff, I was surprised not to hear the, the term Solmo River mentioned because it's such a sort of critical river for that town. And the county, you know, has done so much work around that, along with some, some private groups. So I would hope that, that there is some mention, if not, if we could sort of, you know, talk about the sort of, you know, reiterate the critic, the critical nature of that river in terms, in terms of restoration, because all the way to Yonkers. So the second point is, would hope that when they talk about complete streets, that they actually put in the term protected bike lane somewhere if they're going to be doing some, you know, street redesigns. So that's part of the vocabulary. Sorry. And the third point is, as this may be a fifty, you know, another fifty years before this happens, I was, you know, the town of Mount Pleasant has lost a number of Metro North stations over, over the years. And, you know, like I look at Thornwood, for example, and I wonder if there's some discussion of bringing back that station and using it as then a platform for greater density in that spot.
They didn't really discuss bringing it back, this station, but they did kind of lament its loss. Yeah, they, they didn't really discuss specifically bringing it back, which was kind of something I was thinking about, too. I, I, I know that working with Metro North can be difficult, but that is something that we could recommend in our letter if you think.
Well, I mean, only, I, I would only say it because, again, this could be a fifty-year document and, and the, you know, the, the state, the state is talking about smart growth in a big way, you know. I mean, who knows, maybe there's incentives and things like that that, to create a new, you know, density area like in Thornwood. I mean, the other thing is the Mount Pleasant train station, which was taken out, which, you know, would, could theoretically serve the North Sixty. These are things that we should be sort of at least throwing in there, you know, making sure that it's in there so that somebody could sort of take that idea and run with it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely add that.
But, but nice job, by the way.
Any other, any other comments?
Just a couple of quick comments, Rich.
Go ahead.
I think maybe we should recommend that they explore opening the dam road. As part of one of our comments, that they should reach out to the city and explore opening that up due to all the conditions of traffic that was mentioned. Second thing is the, leaving the single-family zones intact. Should we consider recommending that they consider accessory apartments for some of that? I, I know, I'm not that familiar with the area, but is that something that would add some needed housing and not really upset the character of those areas?
It wasn't something they discussed in the plan. I mean, there's definitely areas where that, that probably could happen. I know that a lot of, a lot of the areas are also either kind of Rockefeller lands or there's a, there's a historic district for, for the, not Andrew Lloyd Webber, Frank Lloyd Wright. He has, that historic district is up towards the northeast of Mount Pleasant. Usonia, that's right, I couldn't remember the name. So those areas probably wouldn't be able to add anything. But there are some other areas that probably could do some accessory apartments that we could mention.
Yeah, I think we, I think we should. If they, it's hard to figure out, you know, long, looking fifty years, as Rob is talking about, when we've sort of come to the conclusion, or many people have, that single-family house development is kind of not the direction to go. And so, but what do you do with existing areas? And so accessory apartments might be a good tool to kind of add to housing that's needed without sort of upsetting the basic uses in that area. And the other thing, in general, the focus on the hamlets is good and the type of zoning changes that they're proposing seems good. And I like the idea of saying, why don't you look about at getting the, the train station rebuilt? So I think all of that, I think it's a pretty good plan, all and all, and all the effort at connectivity and the trails and all the different things that are mentioned in there. But leaving out stuff like opening the, not dealing with traffic from the description we've had of how bad it is and not looking at any simple solutions, even if they're not simple to get New York City to do anything, but simple in a way, in, okay, reopen it. They say yes, and now you've got a different situation, so. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dwight, any other comments, members?
Yeah, it's, I can throw in two comments about Legion Drive, Grasslands Road and Broadway in Valhalla. So there's no, there's no, there's no mention about traffic control over there. When you go down to Legion Drive where the old Arrow Deli used to be, going towards Westchester Community College.
I believe that was actually one of the, there's different intersections that they mentioned that they definitely need to take a closer look at. And I believe that was one of them. If it's not, then I can mention it. So it was Legion Drive and Grasslands?
Right, and also about, we keep talking about like pedestrian or sidewalks over there for people to walk up and down Grasslands Road.
Yeah, they didn't really, other than general concepts of complete streets, they didn't go into specifics in any areas except for the hamlets. Yeah, so I, but, but again, I mean, I'm, I'm working on the, the Grasslands master plan. So that's something we definitely want to talk about is pedestrian connectivity around Grasslands itself, especially for people trying to access services there.
Right, the college and the hospital at the end, I mean, it's all right there in one domain right there. All right.
That's what I can.
And also from the, you would think from Valhalla train station up Broadway and then down Legion onto Grasslands, I mean, that could be part of it, too.
Yeah.
Any other members have comments?
Yes, this is Bernie Tomes again.
Go ahead, go ahead.
At Legion Drive and, and Columbus Avenue, right in front of the clubhouse, we have new lights up, but they haven't been activated. Is that, do you know anything about the activation of those lights?
They didn't specify anything about that area, I don't think so.
I can tell you there's a movement in Valhalla to not ever activate that. That, that it will create even more of a traffic jam in the morning and at night. The one in front of the dam, of course, was critical for all the reasons that we know. But the one at, you know, Legion Drive and Columbus, they're, they're, I just got a notice in the mail saying, please sign this petition to not activate that light. So that could be part of the slowdown of why it hasn't been done yet. And just, you know, I've talked about it for years and years, that the Grasslands Road in front of the college, it isn't been, it has not been a big issue because of COVID and the kids aren't in school, et cetera. But it is still dark and that, that bus station, that bus stop that the kids use as well as staff from the hospital use, you know, from the assisted living, is pitch black. And I don't know why that is not lit. It's, I've got, I go by it a million times and it's usually predominantly women that are in that bus stop. It is pitch black, so safety all the way around. Michael, I don't know if that's really your concern, but it's a concern that I've had forever, that the safety on that road.
Yeah, and that's something they discussed along with completes, the complete streets is taking a look at places like that. So if, I mean, it probably could be mentioned as an example of something that needs lighting, for instance. Just as kind of a basic complete streets mention.
Thank you.
And that was along Grasslands Road by the.
Yes. But if Grasslands Road is the divider between Mount Pleasant and Greenberg, where Kathy's talking about is the Greenberg side. We have to be careful of that. Richard, I'm going to, I promise all the board members, the Austin Comprehensive Plan is much, much, much shorter. But we do need, if we could, can we get to the capital budget amendment first? Because that should be really quick and then we can spend the rest of our meeting time on the Austining Plan.
Okay, regarding the, the Mount Pleasant, can you please send around a draft letter? For the members to review? And what is the timing on that?
I'm going to try and get the draft letter through our system by the end of the week. And then Luke is probably next week, we can get that drafted or circulated to them.
Okay, but you're saying they're still doing, just start, they're just doing the scoping document for a GDIS for the zoning, but are they planning on adopting the comprehensive plan prior to that?
No, that's part of the scoping document.
Part of it?
Yeah. Yeah, so they, they aren't adopting this anytime soon. So there's, there's still processes that they need to go through, so we have, we have time for our letter.
Okay, thank you, Michael. We're going to skip to matters for board action. Rehabilitation of taxiway L, Westchester County Airport Amendment of the Planning Board Report on the two thousand twenty-one Capitol Projects Requests. Who is working, who is going to talk about this?
That's me, Richard, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Great, thank you. Again, this is a capital budget amendment for A zero one thirty-three Rehabilitation of Taxiway L at the Westchester County Airport. The, there's a request to move four million dollars from two thousand twenty-two, it was already in the, the capital program in two thousand twenty-two up to two thousand twenty-one for the first phase of the rehab of this taxiway. And the portion of this taxiway is shown in red there on the screen is from runway eleven twenty-nine to taxiway C. So it just want that one segment and that photo on the right shows the, the actual area that's going to be paved. The project is being expedited to ensure that federal funds don't expire within required timeframes. The project includes, but it is not limited to pavement restoration, rehabilitation of taxiway lighting and signage, and installation of taxiway markings. Ninety-five percent of the project of the four million dollars or three point eight million dollars is from FAA and New York State funding. So, and two hundred, the two hundred thousand dollars in county funds are from the, are from airport special reserve funds. If you have, if, I don't know if anyone has any questions on this, we all have, also have Jim Antonaccio from DPWT to help answer questions.
Looks pretty straightforward, Richard, it's just a repair. Yep. So if we don't have any discussion, I, I'd recommend we approve the.
Can you make a motion for, to approve the amendment to the two thousand twenty-one Capitol Project Requests on Taxiway L?
So moved.
We have a second.
I'll second James.
Hold the roll, please.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Baron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger?
Yes, yes.
Even a friend, Shella?
Yes.
Gail Katzman?
Yeah.
Ollie Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Nat Federici?
Yes.
Matthew O'Connor?
Yes.
Bernie Toms?
Yes.
And Rini Toback?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
Okay, going back to referrals, Village of Austin, Comprehensive Plan referral. Promise this would be shorter.
Yes, this is going to be shorter than the Mount Vernon, I'm sorry, the Mount Pleasant Plan.
We need a plan for Mount Vernon.
We wish. But, yeah, this is, this has been a busy month for comprehensive plans we've gotten to. And this is from the Village of Austining, I'll get right into it. It's both a comprehensive plan and another form-based code associated with the plan. So about the plan, it's an update of the two thousand nine Comprehensive Plan. And the process began in two thousand nineteen with the creation of a steering committee and a number of public outreach efforts. The two thousand twenty-one plan builds on the two thousand nine plan, but with two key additions. And that is a recommendation for form-based zoning overlay districts, which we'll get to toward the end of the presentation, as well as a bullet point, action and agenda, action agenda and implementation plan, which is at the end of the plan. Just a few quick facts about Austining, the Village of Austining. What I didn't know when I read the plan was that Austining, or its former name, which was Sing Sing, was the first state-chartered incorporated village in Westchester County back in eighteen thirteen. The village's long association with Sing Sing Prison, which was built in eighteen twenty-five, led the village to change its name to Austining in nineteen oh one. And that relationship with the prison still remains today, and we'll get to that in a little bit. Just a few quick population statistics. The twenty-eighteen population for the village was twenty-three thousand four hundred seventy-two. This was a slight decline in population since two thousand. But interestingly, although the population as a whole declined, the population of persons under the age of eighteen increased. Also, the median household income in Austining has declined fourteen percent from the year two thousand. This, this has a lot to do with the types of jobs that a lot of Austining residents have, a lot of service-based jobs, retail jobs, et cetera. So in real dollars, some of the income has declined in the village. Just a quick breakdown of demographics in Austining. Thirty-four percent, thirty-eight point four percent of residents are foreign-born and just over half speak a language other than, other than English at home. So a very diverse village. Informing the current Comprehensive Plan update are a number of other studies that the village has been working on over the past couple of years. As you can see from this list, the village has been very busy with local waterfront revitalization program updates, a waterfront access trail plan, other studies, they got, they adopted a complete streets policy, there's been some housing studies and a downtown area study. So all these plans have kind of been integrated into the plan update that we are reviewing right now. The Comprehensive Plan has a traditional structure with ten different chapters. The first two involve the introduction and the overview. Chapters three through nine have discussed different policy topics with specific recommendations that the village hopes to carry out. And then the last chapter is that action agenda and implementation plan that I mentioned before. And then with the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, and then with the, uh, Comprehensive Plan, uh, the picture here on the right, it shows a, uh, the cover of the, um, the downtown and Quoton Avenue overlay districts, um, which is the form-based code, which we'll get to at the end of the presentation. Um, so in terms of land use and zoning, um, the Comprehensive Plan recommends that the village adopt form-based overlays that are contiguous with the VC and NC2 districts. The VC is the Village Center District, which is in the downtown area. The NC, uh, two district is a neighborhood commercial district that, um, is along Quoton Avenue. The main, um, takeaway with the, uh, the zoning would be that it would allow residential uses above the second stories as of right. Um, and it would also allow, um, taller buildings, which we'll get to in a little bit. Um, also, um, there, uh, the land use and zoning chapter recommends that, um, the T District, uh, be revised to allow two-family, um, residential buildings as of right and allow three-family, um, residential dwellings as a conditional use. Um, currently, the T District, which stands for Two Family District, even though it stands for Two Family District in the name, um, a two-family residential building is a conditional use. So, um, you would just, the proposal is just to change that to actually allow two-family dwellings as of right in the district. Um, also, uh, there's a, a, a need to adjust the yard regulations, and this is both in the T District and the S75 District because there were a lot of existing non-conformities. So the hope is by changing some of these dimensional regulations, a lot of the, um, and you can see in the map there, all these orange dots are all the non-conforming properties um, in the village, and most of them are within the T and S75 District. So the hope is to, um, tweak the regulations to reduce that level of non-conformity. Uh, in addition, um, the plan calls for, um, creating a new MF3, uh, multi-family zoning district, which could be mapped in the future, uh, to accommodate, um, infill development, uh, mostly as a, in a, in a form of townhouse development. Also, there's a number of code maintenance issues that the, um, uh, plan calls out that could be addressed. Uh, moving forward, the, um, the Comprehensive Plan has a, a pretty substantial, uh, chapter about the waterfront. Uh, this chapter discusses climate change, which makes it one of the first, um, comprehensive plans we've reviewed that has a substantial climate change discussion. Um, the, uh, plan recommends the creation of a climate adaptation and flood mitigation plan, as well as the development of flood mitigation design guidelines for new developments and major renovations in the village. The waterfront chapter also, um, calls for no further development west of the railroad track. And it's thought that an exception could be made if a project involved an adaptive reuse of a significant or, or worthy building. Um, but that, um, but that, uh, but that adaptive reuse would have to have, um, you know, climate adaptive aspects to it so that it wouldn't be destroyed by, um, um, a, a climate event. Also, um, the plan notes that sea level rise projections show that the Hudson Line tracks would be substantially impacted, but the plan notes that MTA does not currently have a climate change plan in place to address this. Um, also with the waterfront, uh, there is, um, they've identified a couple of, um, areas where, um, development could occur. Um, part of this has to do with, um, consolidating surface parking areas into a parking structure. As you can see on the map, um, the gray shaded areas are all village-owned parking lots that are near the train station. The thought is if they could, um, kind of consolidate all of these parking spaces into a parking structure, it would free up a lot of land to do more waterfront-oriented or transit-oriented development. Um, this map here, uh, shows kind of some of the ideas that they have, um, for the waterfront. Um, just a quick, uh, rundown is that, um, one idea is to expand, uh, the existing New York Waterway Ferry Service that runs between Havasoro and Austining, um, to include, uh, summer weekends. Um, also, um, if the pier could be extended out into the Hudson a little further so that it can become a deep water pier, um, that would help with getting larger ships such as the Clearwater, um, could come to the village, um, and dock there. Um, also, uh, there's a desire to expand Lewis Engel Park, um, which is actually a town-owned park, uh, that's inside the village. But, um, that park expansion would be contingent on moving some of the parking, uh, surface parking lots into the parking structure. Uh, there's also discussion about, um, having shuttle bus serve the waterfront that would connect, uh, the waterfront to both the prison museum and, um, that's proposed, as well as the downtown area that's up the hill, as well as a couple of changes to the road circulation coming in and out of the, um, waterfront area, which we'll get to in the transportation section. Um, also with respect to the waterfront, um, there is a desire to expand non-motorized connections. Um, as I noted before, the village already has a complete streets policy, but they haven't really been able to implement that policy very much, um, in the waterfront area. So there's a desire to do that. Also, um, there's a strong desire to continue the Ripper Walk Trail at every available opportunity. Um, they, the plan highlights that this might require a new bridge over the Sing Sing Hill where it, um, confluentes or flows out into the Hudson River. Also, there is a desire to improve wayfinding, um, both in the, um, waterfront area and, uh, to connect it to the downtown so that people who are new to the village can find their way around. Um, in terms of economic development, the plan notes that there are a number of challenges, um, in growing the village's tax base. But there's a hope that experiential retail, tourism and outdoor dining could be, um, ways that the village could increase economic development activity. Um, also, there's a thought that if the village were to create a village green, um, in the center of downtown, that that could help with those efforts. As you can see in the map here, um, the, um, the, the parcels outlined with the pink lines are all vacant village-owned parcels. And the, um, green shaded areas are all surface parking lots. So there's a thought that these lots have, um, potential to be moved around or, you know, repurposed, um, to create, uh, perhaps that village green or other open space that could be used. Um, also, there is a, um, desire to improve the aesthetics of the, um, Route 9 and Route 133 corridors, which have a lot of businesses along them. Uh, with that, there is a consideration to form a business improvement district for those areas. And also, um, this is one of the first plans that has a discussion about 5G technology and how 5G could impact economic development in the village. Um, going back to transportation, um, this is the, this is a diagram of the proposed changes in traffic circulation between downtown and the waterfront. Um, most of this just involves making Main Street a one-way road for a particular area. Um, the thought is that it would ease the movement of traffic in and out of the waterfront. Um, again, with the complete streets and the shuttle bus, these are mentioned again, uh, as well as the parking plan and the potential for the garage. Uh, there's also a discussion about improving bicycle infrastructure. Um, as, and the plan also notes that the village is currently undertaking a parking study and those, um, the, the results of that study should be available next year and can be looked at, um, as a continuation of this effort. Um, additional topics that are, um, included in the plan, um, there's a consideration for developing a sustainability plan. Um, there's also talk about, um, the installation of solar panels and EV charging stations on village property. Um, another nice thing about the plan is that it addresses the county's, um, uh, County DEF's policy with respect to, um, influence infiltration. And the plan discusses, um, how that, how the land use approval process could be used to identify potential INI projects, which is very good. Um, the, uh, plan also discusses affordable housing and ways to increase affordable housing opportunities. Uh, Austining already has, um, uh, affordable housing regulations on, they're currently in their zoning, but they wanted to consider permitting accessory dwelling units in all single-family and two-family districts as a way to increase those opportunities. Also, um, the plan discusses the idea of making the waterfront a prime location for outdoor events. Uh, they want to continue the momentum around the creation of a Sing Sing Prison Museum. Um, they want to consider creating a downtown cultural venue that could support a restaurant cluster around that venue in the downtown area and, um, encourage the preservation and adaptive use of historic buildings. And part of this would just, uh, include also creating new inventory of those historic buildings and, um, and, uh, promoting the, um, adaptive reuse of some of those buildings. So, uh, moving on to the form-based zoning, uh, that's, um, proposed along with the plan. Uh, as I mentioned before, these, um, would be form-based overlays that are contiguous with the two, um, uh, commercial districts that are in the downtown and along Quoton Avenue. Um, with these overlays, uh, an applicant would have the option to use the overlay or the applicant could use the underlying zoning to develop their property. Um, the regulating plan, uh, as we've been reviewing a lot of these form-based codes, they, they all look, are beginning to look very similar. Um, this particular regulating plan, um, regulates building frontage and building placement, uh, depending on the commercial, I'm sorry, depending on the street frontage that is shown on the regulating plan map. Um, so in this case, um, maximum heights would be permitted at the DO, which is the downtown, um, overlay. Uh, a maximum height of up to four stories or 48 feet would be permitted. Um, in the CA, um, uh, district, uh, the quote, which is the Quoton Avenue overlay, that would be, um, a three-story height or up to 36 feet would be allowed. But within the DO, uh, overlay, a density bonus would be available, which, um, would allow up to five stories or 58 feet if, um, an applicant, um, pays a fee into a community benefit fund. Um, there are also, uh, substantial protections for his, uh, historic buildings. Um, you know, you wouldn't be able to apply for the, um, density bonus if your project was to substantially impact a historic building. Um, and these density bonuses are by special permit from the village board. So it gets an extra level of review before the, uh, bonus is permitted. Um, in terms of permitted uses and parking, uh, all the existing uses that are allowed in the underlying zoning are permitted in the overlay zones. Um, with the exception that residential uses are allowed on the upper floors. And residential uses are also allowed on the ground floor, subject to certain conditions and the type of frontage that a building is on. Um, the existing parking schedule remains in effect, except for the fact that the parking requirements for both multifamily residential and for retail office and medical office uses have been slightly lowered, um, under these, um, under these, uh, overlay, um, regulations. Also, um, the form-based code discusses, uh, frontage regulations. So depending on the frontage type that a lot is located on, um, the form-based code would, um, permit certain types of, um, um, frontage types along, depending on where the, the, the lot is located. They give examples of, um, you know, commercial frontages and regular, uh, residential frontages that would be permitted and how they would work. These are the different types of frontages. These are just a, a sampling. There's, there's more. Um, but these are the types of, um, frontages that would be permitted or not permitted in certain locations. Um, then, once you get into the frontage types, they have additional requirements for what they call edging elements that are um, the subset of the individual frontage types. And depending on where a lot is located, certain edging elements could, um, apply. And so these are, um, examples of those edging elements that would be permitted in certain areas and guide development in those places. Um, then there are also additional standards. Um, uh, lots greater than 10,000 square feet would be required to have, um, 7.5% of that lot area um, as a civic, as a required civic space that's open to the public. Um, an applicant can pay a fee in lieu in 1,000 square foot increments if they aren't able to or don't want to provide that civic space. There's also, um, a number of landscaping and buffering guidelines, as well as architectural guidelines that, um, would govern, um, development projects, uh, in those overlay zones. Um, and then finally, um, outside of the proposed form-based overlay, um, there's additional zoning amendments that are proposed with this Comprehensive Plan that would implement, um, the, the changes recommended by the plan for the T and the S75 districts. So those non-conforming, those non-conformities I mentioned earlier, uh, they are proposing an immediate amendment to address that, um, uh, current, um, with the, with the Comprehensive Plan. Um, and with that, that's the, uh, presentation. Um, are there any questions?
By, uh, good fortune, we happen to have the, uh, Village of Austining Affordable Housing Ordinance in the, under Matters of Board Information. And the, uh, and it's, they do allow payment in lieu without specifying an amount, and they do allow off-site, which means instead of putting the affordable housing in the building to be developed, you can put it somewhere else in the village. And so I think our letter should, uh, include that we recommend against those provisions and that they should adopt the, I assume they have adopted the model ordinance? Is that correct?
Um, I don't think they have specifically because they were not one of the eligible communities. So they never, yeah.
Okay. Well, we definitely, I, I think we should indicate that we, uh, are opposed to their current affordable housing allowing payment in lieu. Anyone else have any comments? Think this is more comprehensive planning than, uh, than anyone can, uh, expect this board to have to deal with in one time, but, um, I guess the timing is such. What is the timing on this one?
Uh, they need a letter back by, um, April 15th. So I will prioritize getting you a letter to review.
Okay. Anyone else who, who maybe hasn't, uh, zoned out? Comments on Austining Comprehensive Plan? Okay. If not, send around the letter, um, for us to review. And as I say, I would propose that you include that we are recommending against their current affordable housing regulation. Does anyone else have, and other board have any concern about the affordable housing requirement? We did discuss it a little bit at the last meeting, the payment in lieu.
I, I agree with, with, uh, your comment, Richard. I don't think it's something that should really be encouraged.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, I agree too. This is Rini.
Okay. I don't know that we have any other business, so I guess it's time for a motion to adjourn. Can I have a motion, please?
This is Holly.
Thank you, Holly. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. I heard everyone in favor. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe. See you next month.
Thank you.
To everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
One of these days, maybe in person.
Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.
We'll try, Richard. We'll try.
Kathleen, could you give me a call?
Sure. What? Can you give me your number?
Nine one four. Eight eight two.
Eight eight two.
Three five zero five.
Three five zero five.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.